Madam Secretary, are you ready for me to call Raul?
Yes.
Trish Bodie? Trish Bodie? Trish Bodie? Okay. Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia? Alexis Grimes?
Here.
Shawde Fashakun? Erin Johnson?
Here.
Christine Mauer?
Here.
Anna Smith?
Here.
It is 6:16 PM and with the Coram of the Board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. We're going to do our opening ceremony and I'm going to introduce our cadet. We have Cadet Seaman Yoshan Pan of the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC at Vista Ridge High School. Will lead the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. Cadet Pan is a sophomore at Cedar Park High School and a second-year cadet. She is an active member of the Lone Star Company's unarmed drill team. Cadet Pan takes pride in serving the community as a volunteer at Veterans Memorial Park and local adoptive road cleanups. She has earned the respect of her classmates and established herself as a trusted go-to leader. Cadet Pan's commitment to service, strong academic performance, sharp personal appearance, and exemplary conduct earned her a designation as a Naval Science Outstanding Cadet. Cadet Pan's performance and dedication reflect most favorably on Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC, her school and the district. Well done. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
All right, it is now my pleasure to have our spotlight recognition for North Elementary. And we have Principal Maginot and her students.
Hi, I'm Reagan Casella, a 4th grader Miss Bennetts class. Other things that make North special is the teachers. Because we are all coming from different schools, our teachers spend lots of time on team building and help us all become friends. They plan group projects that help us feel like a family and feel more comfortable being in a new school. The teachers really want us to feel comfortable coming to school, so they make each day fun and exciting. At North, there are so many ways for students to get involved, which helps us all feel comfortable being in a new school. We have Safety Patrol, which is made up of 5th graders. Each class pre-K through 5th grade has a class ambassador, which helps new students as they enroll. 4th and 5th graders can be a part of the No Place for Hate Council. The 5th graders applied for NASA, which stands for North Alliance of Students and Administrators. Lastly, on our North News each morning, different students serve in different roles such as the news, anchor pledges, and the student pledge.
Hi, I'm Jacks Prince, a 4th grader in Miss Coggins class. The third thing that makes North Elementary School special is that we got to pick the mascot. First of all, our families could submit a possible mascot. Then in February, Miss Maginot visited all the different schools and we all got to vote on our mascot, which is the North Navigators. Then, once our school started, our mascot just started showing up out of nowhere and the students voted to select the name. We named our mascot Northie the Navigator. It has been super fun deciding a part of all of these things about our school.
Hi, I'm Lila Johnson, a 5th grader in Miss Fitch's class. We are naming all the things that make North Elementary special. So many of them are about different things we are doing with learning. The first one is Empower Hour. Empower Hour is on most Fridays during specials. We get to choose what we want to learn and then we go to that choice on 6 to 8 Fridays, depending on the schedule. Some examples of what we are doing include community art projects, movie making, creative writing, dance, basketball, and more. We will have three sessions of Empower Hour throughout the year.
Hi, I'm Oden Blor, 4th grader in Miss Coggins class. I'm going to talk with you about Neil Time, which stands for North Exploration and Innovation Lab. We started the year learning about Neil Armstrong and what he accomplished. Each week, all students get the opportunity to go to Neil Time with the Quest teacher. She plans challenging tasks for us to complete. Neil Time is also going to be time where our Quest teacher plans extension experiences based on our science topics. Going to Neil Time gives everyone opportunity for hands-on activities and working with others.
Hi, my name is Hudson Kegney, 5th grade in Miss McLean's class. Being a new school, teachers and students come from different places. As Reagan talked about, the teachers have done a lot to help us feel comfortable at school and make friends. We end each week with a Friday Blast Off Assembly. We are learning for our school counselor about the graduate profile each week. We've been learning about acquire and queer and flexible thinking. Students are celebrating and recognizing during the assembly. We are learning the school cheer and have a song competition contest. This Friday Assembly has helped us become a school family even in a short time.
Hi, I'm Jacayla Whitewyn, a 5th grader in Miss McLean's class. As you can tell from what we've talked about, North Elementary is a special place from the building, which has space for students to work together. The teachers who make time for us to become a team and work with other students. The different things that we are doing with the learning such as Neil Time and Empower Hour. Ending each week with the Friday Blast Off Assembly is a great way for us to be together and have fun.
Hi, I'm Gina Freeman and I'm proud to serve as the Assistant Principal at North Elementary. As you can see, in just 26 days, we have so many wonderful things happening in our Navigator community. We wanted to tell you that our goal is for our vision to come to life for each and every student every day. Our vision is for North Elementary students to be empowered so that they may achieve in life, advocate for their individual needs, and positively impact the community. To achieve this, our teachers have created enriching learning opportunities and provide many experiences for students to connect and build positive relationships with each other each and every day. We begin each of our days with our Navigator pledge and we wanted to share that with you this evening. Navigators, are you ready? All right. I am a North Navigator. I am empowered to achieve, advocate, and impact.
Thank you so much. Great job, guys. We have one more special recognition and so I'd like to welcome J.J. Colburn with the Science Teachers Association of Texas and Jennifer Meyer.
Well, that was an impressive, impressive crew of 4th graders and a bit of a hard act to follow, but I'll do my best. My name is J.J. Colburn and I serve as the Executive Director of the Science Teachers Association of Texas. And our association represents more than 5,000 science educators at all levels across the great state of Texas. And we promote the advancement of great science teaching and learning. And we're served by a volunteer board of directors led by a volunteer board of directors. And I'm here tonight because one of your own employees has recently served as the president of this incredible statewide association and the impact that she has had on behalf of science students and science teachers all across the state and representing Leander ISD so well is just incredible. And I wanted to make sure that she was formally recognized and thanked, as well as the Board of Trustees and the administration here was also acknowledged and thanked for supporting her in her service to her fellow science educators. So Jennifer Meyer, who is the Senior Coordinator of Elementary Science for Leander ISD, has served as the STAT president over the last year and is currently the past president and will continue her service as we move forward for about another year in the association's efforts. One of our programs is the largest state conference for science teaching in the country. And that is CAST, and some people may have heard of that, the Conference for the Advancement of Science Teaching. And Jen will lead that effort as well as we move into the next couple of years. When Jen was elected to serve, I believe it was right at the beginning, kind of March of 2020, right? When you were elected to serve as the president-elect. And the three-year progression, president-elect, president, and then past president, is a big commitment. But little did we know that we were about to be facing what you all are very aware of in a pandemic. And so while she was also managing all of the efforts here for your school district and your students and her educators that she supports, she was also doing the same thing for STAT. And so just a tremendous extraordinary effort. And Jen, just on behalf of all the science teachers and all the thousands and thousands of students across the state who've been impacted by your work, we say thank you formally in front of your district, in front of your community. If that wasn't enough, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills were also up for review for the first time in a decade during this window. And Jen, with her expertise and her knowledge, guided our association and represented all the science educators across the state in such tremendous ways with the State Board of Education, with TEA, and will continue to do so in that role. So Jen, again, we thank you. Dr. Gearing and Board of Trustees, we thank you for allowing her and supporting her in her service to the state of Texas. And so job well done and job continued. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Superintendent, remarks?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to point out some of the flow of the meeting tonight. As you know, we have five goals in our strategic plan. Empowered student learning, empowered staff, impactful family engagement, equitable access and safe and innovative learning environments. And wasn't it fabulous to hear those North Elementary students pointing out several of those as they were sharing about the architecture of the building? That's such a great word for a young person to be using. Loving on their teachers and the wonderful job that they're doing. Their Safety Patrol, which is students keeping other students safe. The family engagement on selecting their mascot. And then how they do Friday Blast Off Assembly, which really brings them together in their culture and community. And then the empowered student learning through Empower Hour. And they're talking, learning about the graduate profile and even their work through what they're calling Meal Time. And as we go through the agenda, you'll see other parts of the strategic plan showing up. And so as we head through our second part of our Community-Based Accountability Report, you'll hear about empowered staff and impactful family engagement and safe and innovative learning environments. You'll hear about empowered learning and safe and innovative learning environments in the Superintendent Report. And then as we jump into some of the operational items, they are connected to several of those goals at once. And so just want to point out that as the Board does this important work throughout the night, you'll see lots of connections to the strategic plan. Thank you.
Okay. Board member remarks?
Last Wednesday, our Legislative Priority Committee met with our local lawmakers across Leander ISD. And it was our first Legislative Priority Summit and it was fantastic. We, you know, got to present our Leander ISD priorities and had some great conversations in regards to teacher retention, special education allotment, the basic allotment. But most importantly, what was awesome is to have public education advocates in the room to figure out what are we going to do to make sure Leander ISD has a Voices Coming session? So shout out to our Presidents Trish Bode and Alexis Grimes for being there. Great conversations, y'all, and I hope it's not the last one we have. On Monday, I attended the Leander ISD Choir Showcase. Those know I'm a senior mom this year, so it was extra bittersweet for me. But y'all, our choir program is amazing. Our students were out there just living it up. Our choir directors were allowing our students to be who they are. But man, they had everyone in the auditorium moving and grooving and it was a great, great, I guess, first choir showcase after COVID. It was fantastic. And last but not least, on Tuesday, I visited the Leander High School Cosmetology Program and got my haircut by one of our students. I don't know if y'all know, but we have a fantastic cosmetology program at Leander High School. These students start their junior year and when they graduate their senior year, they have a full cosmetology license. So their senior year, they look for individuals to cut their hair so that they can get their hours. And so I did the call and guys, I got my haircut and they did great. So if y'all are looking into, you know, exploring our student services, salon services we have, please reach out. You know, guys, it was great just to listen to our seniors and their why and what this program has done for them. It just, it filled my bucket. It was the best two hours I've spent in a long time. So y'all go see them over at LHS Cosmetology.
So last night I was at the elected officials' reception that was hosted by Cedar Park Chamber and got to just meet with elected officials around the area from the Cedar Park City Council, some of our legislators and PEC. And so it was also my first time of meeting my rep, Terry Wilson. So I definitely gave him download of my frustrations with school finance. I never miss that opportunity whenever I meet any of the reps and like, "School finance, help us." All right, that's it.
Okay. Do you have any?
Just one. I've done some comparative analysis of STAR results for the district and district campuses. I shared a summary of that analysis with Dr. Gearing earlier today and asked Michi to send each of you a copy of that work. So if you want to discuss it, we could put it on a future agenda. If there are just a few one-off questions that you want to funnel through Michi, I guess, for me to reply to everybody, just in terms of interpreting the content, that sort of thing, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. I just want-
Sorry, if you wouldn't mind just funneling your questions through Cindy, that'll help us. Thank you.
I wanted to announce, I believe it's our first annual Empowering Parent Safety, Security, Health, and Wellness Summit on September 27th at the Cedar Park High School PAC. So from 6:30 to 8:00, it'll be a great informational night and I hope you can attend and teenagers are welcome. Yes. Okay.
Question about that, I would like to attend and I think other Board members would like to attend. Do we need to let you know, Bruce, so that we, you know, do we post or whatever so we don't have issues of quorum?
Yeah, if you can just let Cindy know, then we'll manage the other side of it.
Okay, thank you. I have a comment, I guess. Right now, Trish and I are both at TASB and I know everyone else will be joining soon. I started this morning with the Leadership TASB for 2022-23 class. It was a really phenomenal start to the program. Every year, they pick 27 school board members from across the state. They actually, they have representation from 13 of the 20 regions across the state right now. So it's really a valuable experience being able to talk about policy issues that are impacting school boards really across the state and be able to share in that space with one another for the next few days. So that's where I'm at.
And I am serving our Legislative Committee. There are one, well, I'm one of four trustees. Four trustees were elected across the state of Texas to work on the Legislative Committee of TASB and talk about our legislative needs and policies. Leander Board, you'll be pleased to know that every single one of the priorities that y'all submitted to TASB were approved and will be in the Delegate Assembly for final approval on Saturday. And so today's been us getting ready for that, talking about legislation and what's going to come up in the 88th Legislative Session. So we have been active talking about school finance. And I will just do a small follow-up on what Anna was talking about. You know, we had several of our representatives, including John Busey, Representative Wilson, Terry Wilson, and Representative Vicki Goodwin at our Legislative Summit. And they were all engaged. They do want to know how to help our children, how we help get what we need to help our students learn and get the funding we need. It was a great Legislative Summit and they said they want to do it again and even encouraged for us to think about doing it a little longer next time. So there's a lot of good stuff happening on the forefront. We're not done. We still have a lot of discussions to go, but there's been good discussions. I guess we've been in meetings all day. So more discussions to go.
Actually, do you have one thing I wanted to mention? Just a shout out to the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center Board. Great job by the whole group that put on Purse Bingo last Thursday. They raised a whole lot of money for a lot of kids in need, so it was a really great event and great job you, Anna.
Thank you. All right. We will now move to the Citizens Comments portion of our agenda. Please note, there are other ways you can communicate with the Board, but this agenda item is time set aside for us during this meeting to hear. We're going to play the video. Great. Even better. Perfect.
The District and the Board of Trustees are the local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in the Leander Independent School District, like me, as they pursue their mission to cultivate an individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the Citizens Common Agenda Item, which is time set aside during this meeting- which is time set aside during this meeting to hear from the whole community, which can include a wide audience of the entire LISD family. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to a Board Cafe, or you can just tell them that you'd like to chat sometime. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment, Board operating procedures, and BED, local specified guidelines. So, it is important that you have read them before you speak. The Board wants to hear from everyone, but still asks you to be mindful of your conduct. And the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information, if you are presenting material that only certain high schoolers may encounter, remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in Board meetings, either by watching them online, or you might even come see some of us in the audience. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Great job. I love it. Perfect. Great. Speaker number one?
... I'm so excited for the rest of the school year and all the things that make RBMS great. I do have an issue I would like to bring to the Board's attention. The bus I ride, Route 522, is constantly 20 to 30 minutes late in the morning and around 45 minutes late in the afternoon. My parents are constantly having to drive me to and from school, which isn't ideal because I have a bus, and I think that I should be able to use it. I think that in Treviso, we should have another bus route so I can get to school on time and get home on time. Thank you for listening, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Speaker number two?
Hello, good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is David Barnes. I am a parent, a teacher, and I also live here in the district of Leander ISD. I just want to thank each and every one of you for being here, doing all the things that you do all the time, every day, outside hours, inside, like everywhere. Just thank you for doing all that. And I want to just thank you for all that service. At the end of the day, I do want to just kind of do want to address Prop A and Prop B. And so, I also want to thank you for having the survey data available for Prop A and Prop B. And if you look at that survey data, it distinctly shows that Prop A and Prop B hinges on whether or not our community is informed. So, I just want to make sure that we all have this understanding that we're doing everything we can to make sure that community is informed. Prop A and Prop B is going to be one of those things that's going to make sure those student services and programs continue on in the future to include choir, cosmetology, things like band. And so, I just want to thank you for all that support. And I just want to make sure that I reiterate that we're doing everything to inform the public about Prop A and Prop B. And now, the person after me told me I have to lower the mic.
Thank you. Speaker number three?
I think the mic's still on. Hi. I'm Celeste. I'm a mom of four daughters in LISD schools. I first want to thank the Board for the countless hours you spend working to make our district what it is, a safe, welcoming, fun, and exciting environment for our kids. I've personally seen the work you put in and the tough decisions that have to be made to ensure our large and diverse district is one that attracts the best teachers, administrators, and staff. I also want to quickly talk about the upcoming Prop A and Prop B election, also known as ACE and Vator. We're already seeing the misinformation campaign running rampant, and it's doing what they intend for it to do, confuse voters. I have personal conversations almost daily with other parents and community members and can talk about this with them. And I can tell you, people are confused when they hear a loud man who claims to be about honesty and integrity saying it's a 35% tax increase when his own taxes are actually going to be going down by 5.3% with a vote for yes. That man's also running for place one, Mike Sanders. Also, why would you take financial advice from someone who's a candidate for another place five, who has some pretty major tax problems you might want to look into as a voter? We need to take this down to a very simple, easy-to-understand explanation on why voting yes is vital for our district. I know that our community informational sessions are scheduled. What can we do to make this as easy as possible to understand so that people that are hearing the completely inaccurate information, they need to know that they're hearing information from people they can trust and not from those who are being dishonest and deceitful? Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker number four?
Good evening. I came tonight and signed up to talk about parental rights and common sense. It's been over two years now that we've come here, and I'm coming tonight to be on the record once again to say, as a concerned parent, I disagree. I'm not here to tell anybody else, you or anyone else, how to raise your children. I'm saying that I disagree with how you are trying to make my children be affected. Should be common sense. We shouldn't be having to have this conversation for two and a half years. But it's really very simple. It's about freedom. It's about controlling that which has been given to me, not trying to tell others what can be given to them. And as a closing point of this 90-second privilege that you've given me, freedom, once again. Freedom for me to be able to control what I've got. If I take that freedom away from somebody else, then that means that I don't believe in freedom at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker four. Speaker number five?
Here are some points that I need to be addressed for the Prop A ACE. If recapture fails, it is more likely that the state will look at other factors the district is doing to balance the excess revenue and fix the financial issues at Leander before they detach property, i.e., cutting the fat from the budget to reduce cost per student so we can reduce the tax rate. Two, remember the calculation for recapture is the amount of money you are spending per student. We are collecting more revenue because of our cost of educating the student is above the state threshold. We should be asking our school, why is the cost per student so high that you have to tax so much to cover the cost of the student and include a tax to cover the fact that our school financials are being mismanaged in the first place? Three, if they do get to the point where detachment is required, they will look at commercial property that won't impact enrollment before residential will take kids out of the district. Remember, this prop is to purchase enrollment credits to balance the state aid. Eliminating enrollment opportunities is counterintuitive. Four, surrounding school districts all pay recapture rates, and they do not have to have a Vator to cover the payment, which leads to Prop B. Also, Prop A, recapture. Houston ISD is a great example of recapture and the removed commercial properties out of the school district. And the tax increase of Prop A fails if the INS tax rate, if at all, the school site specifically states INS increases if a fails because of presumed lower tax base, but it is not guaranteed. Also, vote no for the Vator. Like Star Wars, no to the Vator. Thank you.
Speaker six?
We're on now. Good evening, trustees. My name is Mike Sanders, and I want to say a few words tonight about the illegal electioneering that is occurring right now under the guidance of Superintendent Gearing. It is against state law to promote or to oppose any proposition on the ballot. I want to read to you what the Attorney General has to say. Texas school officials should be aware of the following. According to Section 255.003A of the Texas Election Code, an officer or employee of a political subdivision may not knowingly spend or authorize the spending of public funds for political advertising. Furthermore, the Texas Election Code prohibits the Board of Trust of a school district from using state or local funds to electioneer for or against any candidate, measure, or political party. Texas Education Code, Section 11, Dot 169. This illegal activity needs to stop. And if we elect new board members, we will hold our superintendent accountable for his illegal activities. I'm asking you to stop now. You're using email addresses. You're using the residence addresses of students in our school district to send out emails and to send out letters. If you're not going to share those same email addresses and those same physical addresses with the other side, well, then, it's very unfair.
Speaker number seven? Number seven? Speaker number eight?
I'd like to convey the thanks of my daughters and my wife and our whole family for all of these who've done so much, of you who've done so much to serve our community, to the staff and teachers of the LISD as well. We really, really support the public schools. I really want to appeal to anyone who's more on the conservative side, all the way through the middle, all the way to people who are liberal or progressive, that there's been a lot of trouble the last two years at the school district meetings and outside the school district meetings. I come to you as a devout Christian tonight to tell you that I heard from one of the candidates recently who said that I was a Satan worshiper and challenged to meet me in public. Similarly, we have a guy here who just constantly prays loudly over other people and seeks to impose his religious views. We also have heard from one person who says that children who have spoken at the school district meetings who have autism don't really have autism because autism isn't a thing, apparently, and that that's demonic possession. And these are the people associated with the other group that I think has been really ill-behaved in the meetings and outside the meetings. And so, just as a Christian, I think, you know, we shouldn't impose our religious views on other people. We should just respect other people, and I'm glad that the school district does that. But I don't think all the school board members do that, and I don't think that all of the candidates do that. So, I would urge thinking people to realize that and take action. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker number nine?
Good evening, neighbors and the board. Tonight, well, it looks like fear and confusion might be the order of the day. I watched Mr. Nice accent talk on his Prop A, Prop B video, and I tell you what, I didn't get it. So, maybe a lot of other parents in the same way. That's not what I here to come talk about. I really came to talk about your actions over the past two years and what has happened. I don't really understand sometimes what you're doing to this group of students that you have. In particular, number one is your Make Racism Great Again Department, otherwise known as DEI. I think you might know about that. I don't know what that's all about, other than following the lemming crowd. Number two is the porn book. She never took ownership of that issue. Why is that? You could have shut it down real quick had you just taken ownership and said, "No more. I don't want to hear it. I don't want to hear it in these board meetings anymore." Number three is CRT. You never disowned it. Only one person disowned it, actually. Erin did. The rest of you is like, "Hello?" Forced pronouns. You used to have a problem that's growing in this district where some people can't get into their classes without forced pronouns being pronounced. Are you kidding me? Gender dysphoria? Do you want to make that front and center in our society and our classrooms? Grow up. And finally, masking. You're the people that masked our kids. Inexcusable. You should apologize. Thank you.
Speaker number nine? Sorry. Speaker number 10? Speaker number 10? Speaker number 11?
Good evening. My name is Alexis Huddleston, and this is my fifth year teaching in the district. I first want to thank you for serving on this board. You have a difficult, time-consuming, and often thankless job, and we appreciate your hard work and dedication to this district. I also want to thank you for prioritizing communication about Prop A and Prop B. LISD's recent polling has shown that when voters are informed, they overwhelmingly support these ballot measures. However, without information, people are likely to vote against Prop A and Prop B. These two ballot measures are critical for the future success of our district. If they do not pass, around 500 staff positions in many successful programs are at risk. We cannot afford to approach Prop A and Prop B with anything less than the utmost priority. So, I urge you to continue your hard work by doing anything and everything within your power to ensure our community is fully informed about Prop A and Prop B. We must pass these two measures, or unfortunately, the years of work from this board will be undone. Thank you.
Thank you. This now concludes public comments. I am going to call up some things out of order in order to keep our guests that are in the audience at the forefront. And so, I am going to call up 8B1, the Basile Survey with Matt Gamble.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for having us today. I'm joined today with Chief Operating Officer of Basile's Survey to discuss the survey results regarding propositions A and B. This is Matt Gamble.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
All right. So, pleased to share with you the results of our voter survey we conducted September 11th through 14th. We interviewed 350 voters in the district, and the margin of error to a sample of the size is 5.2%. On the next slide, we're going to look at the questionnaire format. And Christina, there are a few clicks there. Essentially, what I want to demonstrate with this is that we started the survey by asking respondents how they would vote on props A and B, reading the official ballot language, because we want to understand how they react to that language. It's a little confusing, or it's pretty vague. And so, we want to know how they react to that. And then, we explained what the ballots were in a pretty neutral format. And then, after that, we provided additional information about what the propositions would do. And after that, we asked the respondents again how they would vote for the props, now that they've understood what the ballots actually are asking them to vote for and understanding more about why the dynamics within those propositions. And the survey ended with demographics. One of the things that we also did is looked at, used regression analysis to look at which messages will most have correlated most with their attitudes about Prop A and B. And I'll show you what that was when we get to it. The next slide, I've got, Christina, there are four bars that will come up. This is looking at the vote behavior of our respondents. What I want to illustrate here is that 53% of the registered voters in your district participated in the last midterm election, November 2018. 77% of our respondents voted in that election. We didn't limit the survey to only people who voted in the last midterm. New people will show up to vote. Some people who voted in the last midterm won't make it to the polls this year. But we know a majority of them will have voted in that election. And what we're seeing here, and with the next bar, is that this is a very likely voter sample. If the respondent said they were not going to be voting in the November election, we thank them for their time and continue to go to go on and find another respondent because we are looking at a likely voter sample. The next slide shows you two general viewpoints about the district. The first is their image or their opinion of the district's image. 67% positive, 16%- 67% positive, 16% negative, and 17% unsure. Comparing this data point to some of the surveys that we did last year is kind of comparing green apples and red apples because we're polling a different type of electorate. It's a likely voter for a midterm, and we were looking at a likely voter for a constitutional election. But for what it's worth, this is about kind of where we were in the middle of the image of the three polls that we did last year. The takeaway here is that 2/3 of respondents have a positive impression of the district. Only 16%, like I said, negative. And this is really on par with what we see across the state when we ask this question. The next question really dealt with their attitudes about whether they thought the district needed more money for daily operations. And one of the things that we do when we ask this question is half the time, we say, do they think that they need more money for daily operations and teacher pay? And we see a difference when we throw that word, teacher pay, in there. And it underscores the fact that the majority of voters, they really don't immediately connect the dots between your daily operations and teacher pay, even though teacher pay makes up a high percentage of what your daily operating budget is. We see that the net of needs more minus has enough is plus 11. When we look at the language without teacher pay, it's a plus 5. When we look at with teacher pay, it's a plus 16. And that tells us that when you ask them, if you need more money for daily operations and teacher pay, there's even more of a call for the district needing more money. It was over 50%. So moving on to the next, we can go to the next slide, Christina. For Prop A, we asked a couple of questions before we got into the explanation of what it was. We wanted to understand how much they knew about recapture and some of the things around that. And so in question seven, we told them that recapture was when property wealthy districts are required to send a portion of their local tax revenues to be redistributed by the state. Half the time, we said it's also called Robin Hood, and we asked them if they're familiar with that. I'll show you the results on the next slide. But another question that we asked to get around how much they understood was, did they think that Leander was subject to recapture last year in sending local revenues back to the state or not subject to recapture? Is another way of figuring out how aware they are of this issue. And then the final question that we really asked was, this is where we explain what an ACE election is, that the district is going to start being subject to recapture when this happens. Law requires voters choose between purchasing attendance credits or not, which would prompt the state to permanently detach a portion of the district's tax base. Before we asked them if they would favor or oppose that, we want to know, are you understanding this? Do you find this easy or hard to follow? So the next slide, this really shows us kind of really a profile of how aware they are of this issue. So a majority of respondents are somewhat familiar or more with recapture. Only 23% not familiar. The next bar, we see that 51% aren't sure if you were subject to recapture last year or not. Only 12% know that you were not subject to recapture. So there's a large majority of people who are somewhat familiar with what it is. There's a very small percentage of people who actually know that you weren't subject to it last year. And then our final data point here is how easy this is to follow. 43% found it easy to follow. There's going to be some people who just are really confused by this whole discussion. Another 33% found it so-so. So when we look at the initial ballot, when we test the official ballot language, we find that plurality of respondents are unsure. They just don't know how they would vote. That's two out of five. There's more support than opposition, which is, you know, an indicator that if the election were held today, probably would pass. But with 40% unsure, it really does illustrate the need to provide a lot of education. Look what happens when we just ask them if they would vote for Prop A, knowing what it actually means. Look at that change. 54%, so 20-point increase, would vote for it. And that's really here, just explaining what in the world Prop A is about, is really just enough to have someone go, okay, I would support that. You still have the quarter that don't know how they would vote. And you'll see that number drop as we provide more information about that. The next slide here will show you the information that we provided. So prior to that was just explaining what the ballot language really did. These statements here give a little bit more explanation of what would happen if Prop A passes, what happens if it does pass. We told them, you know, it could potentially increase the INS tax rate. People or taxpayers detached could end up paying a different tax rate of their new school district. We told them how much the first-year attendance credits would cost the district. One of the two big messages that we found to be most impactful for people to sort of understand what Prop A was and correlating with their attitudes about it at the end was that there are approximately 200 school districts in Texas that are subject to recapture, and all of them purchase attendance credits as it's widely regarded as the most cost-effective option. We told them that if it passes, it's not going to increase property tax rates. We also told them that detachment or other alternatives to purchasing attendance credits, they've never been done before, and it's all relatively new part of the law. And even experts at the state aren't able to really answer some questions about how this may impact Leander. So after they heard all of that, we asked them how they would vote. If we click one more time, I think, Christina, we will see some interesting things we found. What really showing there is the percentage of people that said, hearing this statement makes me vote for versus hearing this statement makes me vote against, and how they actually voted at the end of the survey. And what we're looking at here is that a lot of people who said that some of these statements would make them vote against, a lot of them ended up voting for Prop A at the end. And it's kind of a head-scratcher. But it's because, we see this all the time in polling, regardless of whether it's for ACE or whatever. When you have, when you put out negative sounding messages that are in line with a for vote, it can sometimes almost backfire. And saying all these negative things, like if Prop A doesn't pass, this is going to happen and that's going to happen. And I say negative, it's just because it's just kind of, if it doesn't pass, that's the negative, but not pass. Then, and these bad, these results will happen. Some people go, oh, I'm against that. And then at the end of the survey, they're actually, oh, I would vote for it. It just shows you it's a little bit confusing. And sometimes, again, when you're, some of the languages have a negative context to it, it can make someone go, oh, yeah, I'm against that, when really, they would be for it. They're just kind of against the negative result. Just something to be aware of. And it really is in play here because it's such a new concept. Most people aren't familiar with voting on ACE elections. So on the next slide, you'll see initial and explain, and then where we end up after more information about, you know, what could happen if it doesn't pass. And I think one more click there should bring up after those message statements. We tested it both ways at the end. The explain ballot and then the official ballot. And they were essentially the same, which tells us that, you know, most people understand now what that ballot language means after everything that they heard. 2/3 of respondents are for or would vote for the ACE prop, or Prop A, having heard more about it. So obviously, there's a lot of support just for it in general. And then hearing more about how it could impact the district, there's even more support. Let's move to Prop B. Oh, sorry, one more. So I told you that we looked at the regression analysis and how well things correlated. Again, thinking back to what I was saying earlier about sometimes the negative messages were resulting in people saying, oh, I'm against for Prop A. Well, they really were for Prop A. So we're looking at the correlation. And what we found are the messages that correlated most with someone being for Prop A, or those last three on the slide there, that all districts that have to do, that are subject to recapture, do this, that it's not going to increase the tax rate, and that there's even state experts that can't exactly say what's going to happen to the district if Prop A does not pass. Those were the most effective messages. And the takeaway there again is not to run the campaign just on, if this doesn't pass, all this stuff, all these bad things are going to happen. Let's go now then to Prop B. This slide here is just a summary of those top messages for you in terms of what correlated. So we did the same thing with Prop B as we did with A. We tested the official ballot language, and we found that 45% would vote for this. 38% would vote against. A lot more uncertainty here. When we look at an explanation of this, it's 61% for, 26% against. So a lot of support when they know what this is. And I want to be specific with what that we explained in the ballot because we were pretty careful not, and I said earlier that we were providing a neutral explanation. What I meant is that we said that it would be an increase in the MNO rate of 9 cents for a new tax rate of $1.27 in order to provide, half the time, we said a net of $32 million. The other half the time, we said the additional $99 million. But we didn't tell them that the INS was going down. We really just wanted to say what this prop is doing is we're increasing the MNO rate by 9 cents to provide this additional revenue. And there's support for that. Before, we told them that their INS tax rate's going down by more than this MNO increase. So if you look at the next slide, we did provide them some more information about that. Before we show that, I'll show you how familiar they are with the two different tax rates. Let's bring those up. I was a little surprised that more people were familiar with recapture than the fact that they have two different tax rates in one. 53% aren't familiar with the fact that their rate is made up of two different rates. And in a way, this is similar to Prop A in the sense that there's some things behind it that the average voter just isn't familiar with. Let's go to the next slide. So we provided more information about Prop B to the respondents. And what we're showing here, really kind of the more, I would say, mechanical fiscal aspects of Prop B. Don't change yet, Christina. But the next slide we're going to show was more about kind of what the money would be used for. Can we go back to that real quick? Sorry. So here is where we told them that the INS was going down and the resulting rate would still be less than it was today. And we did tell them that regardless of this, if this passes, property taxes will still go up due to increases in appraisals. So we kind of told both sides of that argument, if you will. And we told them how much more net revenue would be generated from that. So again, more of the mechanical fiscal things. Let's go to the next slide. We asked how easy this was to follow, just kind of like we did with the ACE. Are you understanding this? This is a little bit easier to follow than the ACE, where we had 30% say it was hard to follow. Only 20% found this to be hard to follow. And then moving to the next slide, here's where we told them more about what the funding would be used for from Prop B. We talked about how the board had recently approved these pay increases and this would provide the funds for meeting this obligation, how it would be used for teacher recruitment, and letting them know that, you know, you do compete with neighboring districts for teachers. That if it doesn't pass, you might need to cut teaching positions. That could impact student-to-teacher ratios. It could impact programs. And also how this could impact the budget deficit. And this would help kind of maintain current staffing levels. So different ways of talking about how this would be used. And then after that, we asked them again, having heard more, how they would vote. And what's interesting here is that the support doesn't really change a lot, which is even fascinating because we, between the initial explain, and Christina, if we can bring up the next one there. After they heard even that the tax rate, overall tax rate, was going down, it went up from 61% to 65%. So there's not a lot, there's kind of like a ceiling there, if you will, of support. But you did see the intensity behind that support go up from 33 to 46. So my kind of take is that, you know, they're either kind of for increasing the MNO rate by 9 cents to provide more money for the district, or they're not. The fact that the rate's going down is, you know, makes them a little bit more excited about it, but it doesn't really pick up a lot more support. The other thing that was fascinating is that we, half the time, we said it was going to provide a net $32 million. Half the time, we said we'd provide you with $99 million more than the previous year. They tested about the same. So if you may remember, when we were looking at the bond surveys, you know, the bond amount is really just a big number. It's hundreds of millions of dollars. Here, again, it's, you know, $32 million, $99 million. It's either kind of for giving the district millions more with the 9 cent increase, or you're not. So let's go to the next slide. Same thing here. We looked at which messages about Prop B correlated most with people supporting Prop B. The inverse of that is, you know, which opposition to the messages correlated with the opposition to Prop B. The things that have the strongest correlation are highlighted in light blue. And we found that the information that was really most important to people that are supportive of Prop B was that second to last message, which essentially was, it's almost impossible for me to read on my screen, but it can kind of go off memory. If it doesn't pass, then the district is going to have to cut teachers, and that can impact student-to-teacher ratios. And the other half the time, we said if it doesn't pass, it can impact programs. And those, that's unique to the other messages because that's the one that really talks about how it impacts students. The other messages were kind of how it impacts, it can help teacher salaries or help the district's budget. But talking about how this impacts students was what really correlated the most. You'll notice that you've been saying the tax rate's going down, and you're going to have a lower tax rate if this passes. Those were top messages. It doesn't surprise me because you didn't really move the needle too much with that. We just essentially increased the, how much people liked it that already liked it. Let's go on to, let's see. This is just a summary of those top messages again, looking at what parents and non-parents resonated best with them along with the total sample. And then I think I've got a summary slide after that. Yeah. So we've got some key findings for Prop A. Majority of respondents are familiar with recapture, but 78% don't realize that Leander was not subject to it last year. 43% found the explanation to be easy to follow, but there's going to be, 30% found it hard to follow. We start off with just a lot of people unsure based on that ballot language. It's very vague. But when they know what it's asking of them, they're supportive of it. And then when they know kind of more of the repercussions and what it means if it was to pass or versus not to pass, that support goes to 2/3. And then when we look at Prop B, majority of respondents are not familiar with the two tax rates. They found it to be a little bit easier to follow, though, than the ACE. You still have a sizable percentage that are going to be confused no matter what. Initially, there's more support than opposition, but, you know, it's under 50%. And it really kind of, both initial positions show that there needs to be some education, just like the Prop A, though, when they know what the ballot language actually means, they're supportive of it. After they hear more about it, it's really the intensity behind that support that really increases. So with that, I can take any questions that you may have for me.
I have a question. So, can y'all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
For Christina or Bruce, and then y'all can tag in whoever you want, I'm thinking of start with why? Knowing that, we've talked about this. We know as a district, we don't campaign for or against propositions, but our job is to help educate and inform. Then why or what do we learn from this information?
So that's a great question.
And this information provides us with which pieces of the factual information that we're putting out resonate with different audiences that we're putting it out to. And so it just helps us really refine the message, but it's, it's really just which factual information are we sharing with whom? Does that help answer your question?
I'll continue to do it. I have a way to ask.
So, President Bode, I think my big takeaway is, is that the more a voter knows, the more information that they feel equipped with, the more educated they are and the more empowered they are at the ballot. So I, I feel like with the ballot language stated the way that it is, for us and our role to provide the context of the situation and what voters are facing, this gives them a full picture as opposed to just cold going into a ballot, going into cast a ballot and having to be confronted with that ballot language. It doesn't mean that we're advocating one way or another. It simply means that we're stating how, how the overall impact of $1.20, not 27 per valuation, $100 valuation impacts the district. I think we've been incredibly transparent about how that translates to our taxpayers, our classrooms, and to our, our staff. And the overall impact to our retention and recruitment and to our programs.
That, that helps. Thank you so much. We know with bond, we know that, we have our community come back and tell us, why are you not giving me all the information? I didn't feel like y'all gave me the information. So your explanation helps me understand that we're just trying to get our voters some actual information out there.
Yeah, I'll just jump in and say, one of the other benefits is there's a lot of information to put out there. And by understanding which things really resonate the most with voters, it can help inform them so they're not having to try to remember and retain 15 different factoids. And just having a couple of key messages is really important, especially in the campaign environment of the midterm when they're going to be inundated with all sorts of campaign ads from other people. So you're going to be kind of fighting for their attention. So that's the other benefit, I think, of this.
I think I go back to what Matt said about the $99 million versus the $32 million. When that tested, it seemed as overall, when voters look at the overall numbers, it didn't really matter when they knew what the money was intended for. So it's those little things that, where, where we were sticker shocked by that number and that having to be on the ballot. When it looks like our voters or our, our respondents looked at the date or looked at that ballot language, it seemed to have very little impact. So those little things help us be able to, to, to go through this space with a little bit more understanding of what, of the willingness of our voters.
Was there a split between parents and non-parents in their initial thoughts? Just to see how the message has been getting around?
Yeah, so there was a difference. We, we always find that parents are more supportive of things than non-parents when it comes to school districts. It's not unique to, you know, Leanders, it's across the board. But we did see that, like for example, for the ACE, the majority of, or plurality of both groups were unsure. The understanding of ACE and recapture and the different rates, there wasn't a huge difference among parents and non-parents. So they kind of both start off at the same place in terms of the understanding. And there's just a little bit more support for these among parents, but there's a lot of uncertainty among both groups.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt, for being here.
Yes, thank you, Matt, for being with us.
All right, I'm going to call up our next guest for the consideration of approval of all matters incident and related to the issuance and sale of Leander Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Bond, School Building Bonds, Series 2022. Blake Roberts will be our guest.
And Becky Garcia has come up and, somebody's hiding back there. Is Gina hiding back there? No. Just you? No, Jimmy? No, we don't need Jimmy for this.
Becky, do you have the slide?
Is that working? Okay. Well, good evening, Board and Dr. Gearing. This evening, we're requesting approval of a parameter order allowing us to issue 135 million from the 2017 and 2021 previously approved bond authorizations. 127 million of the issue will come from the 2017 authorization, balance of 167 million, leaving 40 million unissued. The remaining eight million will be issued from the most recent 2021 authorization in the amount of 33 million, leaving 25 million unissued. The proceeds from this sale will fund the next 12 to 18 months of ongoing projects as detailed in the project list. Mr. Blake Roberts is here tonight to present information regarding the sale and to answer questions you may have. And Kristin Savant is here as well.
Thank you, Becky. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Gearing. Good to be with you this evening. My name is Blake Roberts, Director with PFM, Financial Advisor to the District. I will mention Kristin Savant with Norton Rose Fulbright is here. That is the firm that acts as the district's bond counsel. So she's available to answer any legal questions as well. I have a few slides to overview the game plan for the issuance of bonds and lays out what we're attempting to do for your authorization. So as, as Becky mentioned, this is to, bond issued to fund approximately 135 million of projects from 17 and 21 bond elections. There's about 200 million in overall authorized but unissued bond authority, but certain of those projects either aren't ready to go. And so this is the reason we're funding only the, a partial amount of that. The bond ordinance that you'll approve this evening delegates the authority to the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer to direct the financing team to issue the bonds and sell the bonds on your behalf. The team consists of PFM as Financial Advisor, Norton Rose Fulbright as Bond Counsel, and Haynes and Boone as Disclosure Counsel. The bonds will be sold via a negotiated bond sale. The district recently selected a pool of underwriters that it will be able to choose from for future bond sales. And from that pool, in discussion with Pete Poppy, Becky Garcia, and the PFM team, we selected a group of four underwriters led by Ramirez and Company to lead a group of investment banks comprised of Ramirez, FHN Financial, Huntington Bank, and Wells Fargo. We expect the bonds will price in mid-October and close in early November. We are going to be nimble. There's a lot of market activity and economic information coming out that has caused some volatility. So the advantage of a negotiated sale on this market is that it gives us flexibility to pick a pricing day and move if needed, but that's the game plan. We have already met, Dr. Gearing, Becky, and Gina and the PFM team with the rating agencies, had good meetings with both S&amp;P and Fitch. Expect to have your underlying ratings affirmed at AA/AA. And really good news, this morning, I received the Texas PSF approval letter for the bond sale. So that allows the bonds to be sold guaranteed by the state of Texas at a AAA rating, which will help lower interest rates. Bonds are secured and paid by your INS tax. And the bond repayment will be structured in a way that matches the useful life of the assets being financed. So five years for vehicles and technology, and then 30 years for, for longer-term buildings, et cetera. This is an overview of the schedule. As I mentioned, we have currently penciled in October the 12th, but are really watching carefully some of the economic news that's coming out and those indicator dates that will be released to know if we should, should move or, or be nimble. But that's the tentative date. And then bond closing when we receive the money in early November. It is no secret that interest rates have increased as the Fed raises its benchmark rate to tame inflation or attempts to tame inflation. Just yesterday, the Fed increased its benchmark rate by another 75 basis points to the three, three and a quarter percent range. Expectations are that that rate may go to above 4% by the end of the calendar year as the Fed attempts to navigate a soft landing by raising rates to tame inflation and not throw the economy into a recession. So that's the challenge before the Fed. So you can see where rates have gone over the last three, two years. The good news is, if there is good news and rates increasing, is that from a, from a, from a, a long-term standpoint, this is the yield curve, which shows you borrowing rates for a one-year through a 30-year maturity. You can see the yield curve has flattened. What that means is that rates on the, rates across the curve have gone up, but on the short end in that far left axis, there's not much difference in a one-year rate at the moment and a 30-year rate. So there's not as, there's not as heavy of a penalty to borrow long. The difference between a 30-year rate and a one-year rate is, is about 100 basis points or only 1%. From a historical perspective, you can see over the last 22 years or so where we are, we were at all-time lows and are sort of approaching the midpoint again as rates go back up. Really good, again, as I mentioned, good meetings with S&amp;P and Fitch. Again, we'll commend the board because a lot of the, the commentary from the rating agencies previously and while we anticipate strong outcomes this time have to do with debt management. So certainly, the economy helps, right? I mean, a great tax base, population growth is wonderful, good location in Austin, maintenance of very strong reserves. That's been a lot of work on the budget side of things. And then I want to put on, focus on that third bullet point from the most recent upgrade from Fitch, which in summary reflects a significant decline in your debt levels and really market improvement in debt management practices. And then it goes on to talk about the reduction in Cabs. So again, that, that's really a lot of work by the board to enable the finance team to do good work on the debt reduction side of things. So again, you're at AA/AA underlying, and then we will have the PSF rap on these bonds. Here is an overview of the bond financing itself. We've provided some indicative results on interest rates. We ran these numbers about a week ago. Rates have gone up since that time, so what you see may be a bit higher. But again, we're blending a five-year piece and a 30-year piece on the asset side of things for an all-in true interest cost of about 4.2%. The range will be 4.2 to 4.4% is my guess on pricing day. We sell bonds at a premium, meaning that you receive, we'll, we'll issue bond principal of about 126 million and, and receive premium of about 9 million to fund total projects of 135 million or so. And then the graphic below in the, in the bottom part of the slide lays out your existing debt service year by year. That's the dark blue. And then the orange is the new debt service that will be layered on, layered on as part of this bond. This is a, a, a small print pro forma of the, of the effect of the bonds on your existing and future debt service. What we have shown is the principal and interest on the bond in columns four and five, debt service in six. And then in seven, there is the continued prepayment of Cabs with INS cash that will occur later this year. This is a, a simple pro forma. I know you've seen many versions of this previously in regards to, you know, larger capital plans. I wanted to focus on this to demonstrate that, that this particular bond is easily afforded within the current tax rate and will allow you to pay off Cabs this year. That concludes my formal remarks. Certainly happy to answer any questions or if there are legal questions for Kristin Savant to, to help as well.
Any questions? Then I need a motion. All right, yes. No, this is discussion only this time.
I move the Board to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of Leander Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds, Series 2022. A second. And I call the vote. All in favor? Two on the screen, five here, all in favor. Good, seven eyes. Sorry. All right, thank you so much. We appreciate you. Becky, Blake, have a great night. All right, one more guest this evening. I would like to move to 8C. Nope, this keeps moving. 8C1. The Leander Educational Excellence Foundation Annual Update and Report. And we have Crystal Smith, the LEAF Board President, and Jonathan Campbell, our new Executive Director. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Board members, for everything that you do and for giving us the opportunity to speak just a little bit about the mission, the accomplishments, and the vision of, of LEAF. I'm going to do my best to squeeze everything into the two-hour presentation that you told us we could have, so kidding. Everything we do is rooted in our mission of providing opportunities cultivating success and building community. It's a threefold continuous cycle. Without opportunity, there is no success. And without giving back to the community, success becomes self-centered. So we, as LEAF, seek to provide opportunities for all students, cultivate success in the district, and empower students, teachers, and staff to build up their communities wherever the road will take them. Oh yeah, there we go. Oh, there we go. LEAF's main areas of focus are student innovation, mental health, teacher and staff empowerment, and career and college readiness. One of LEAF's quantitative goals is to put $1 million back into LISD classrooms by 2025. This past year, we ended our fiscal year at 632,471. We raised 100,000 more than we did last fiscal year and exceeded budget revenue by $30,000. Our gala sold out for the first time, and we opened up an endowment as another significant future revenue source. So let's just take a look briefly at our specific initiatives. Through community partnerships, we're able to invest $20,000 in children's literacy programs, including early literacy and supplemental reading. And we were able to give funding for over 170 families to have free access to the Cedar Park Library during the summer months. In the aftermath of the COVID-19 pandemic, LEAF invested in mental health and funded for the district for three years a full-time mental health professional serving children and families. LEAF partnered with the Moody Foundation for fiscal year 2122 for the, the year's allocation. LISD's Transitional and Independent Learning Program helps young adults 18 to 22 years of age to develop skills and knowledge necessary for successful transition into adult living, based on the Admission, Review, and Dismissal Committee. LEAF was able to gift the program $4,000 for appliances such as a refrigerator, dishwasher, washing machine, and dryer. These gifts will help our students prepare for meaningful work and community involvement. One of the newer initiatives LEAF helps fuel is Uncharted Learning. Uncharted Learning helps inspire students to discover their passions, strengthen their capabilities, and create their own futures. These programs offer a unique and comprehensive mix of resources for schools to bring entrepreneurship to students, elementary, middle, and high school. LEAF provides over $22,000 annually to fund Fresh Ink EDU in our elementary schools, and Incubator EDU, and Accelerator EDU in our high schools. I had the pleasure of visiting the, the accelerator at Vista Ridge High School just last week and was blown away by the level of professionalism and, and just emotional and social maturity of our students. I was very proud. We at LEAF take college and career readiness very seriously. So we're thrilled at the opportunity to fund AP tests, dual-credit textbooks, and college coaching. Many of the students we benefit are on free or reduced lunch. We're seeing a lot of first-generation students take advantage of these resources that they might not normally have. I've heard some stories about our college coaches, and they're nothing less than just extraordinary about the, the level of impact they can have in, in a young person's life. Leander ISD, Leander ISD is very well-known for its success. It's a, it's a well-known school district. I knew this well before coming to LEAF. There's a, there's a good reputation here throughout the city of Austin and the state of Texas, really. Different, different rankings show us near the top 10. Different rankings show us near the top 10 or 10 or 12. I think we're going to get to number one, but that's just me. But I think a big reason for the success is our teachers, and so we take our teacher empowerment very seriously. This past year, we were able to award $100,000 to teachers for professional development, STEM and Makerspace Labs, and other advanced teaching resources. And just a thanks to some of our new partners that we were able to bring on this year, McCulloh Heating and Cooling and Photo Texas, scoreboard partner Duncan, they're no longer Duncan Donuts, although I think they serve great donuts still. Their coffee is phenomenal, but Duncan is one of our partners. And community partners Cedar Park Library Foundation, Greater Round Rock Community Foundation, and Dell EMC. We're grateful for their dedication to making an impact in our community. So in conclusion, on behalf of our board, staff, partners, and volunteers, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate the work that you do. And I appreciate Crystal Smith, our Board President, being with us today and the rest of our board. Together, let's make Leander ISD the strongest school district in Texas.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anybody have any questions or?
I'm really sad that we're going to miss Mudcycle on Saturday. That is like one of my favorite events that y'all do for the community, so please get extra dirty for me.
We've been at Vista Ridge preparing the last several weeks, and Steve, the parking lot guy, he sees me and he looks like this. He says, "Oh, you're the mud guy." So that's another nickname you can write down.
Have so much fun.
Having some serious FOMO not being there for Mudcycle, but my family will be there with you, Jonathan, running those foam machines.
Thank you. And I don't know if I formally introduced myself. I'm Jonathan Campbell, the new Executive Director of LEAF. And we also have Audrey Manning, our Development Coordinator. So we're a new team, and we're excited to be here.
Thank you, welcome. Thanks, Kristin. Have a great night. All right, now we're going back up to number six, the Consent Agenda. Need a motion?
I move the board to approve the Consent Agenda items as presented.
I second.
All those in favor? I have seven eyes and no knees. All right, going to the next. Hold on. Superintendents, report.
Thank you, Madam President. So as you know, this week we had our coral showcase. No, our coral, coral. Sorry, my team has been coaching me in how to say that, but they said no underwater activities in Leander ISD. So I hate to shout out a particular group, but the Cedar Park High School boys really, for me, just, just, they had so much fun. I think that was the thing that captured me is they're just, they're so talented, but they just had so much fun. And so you don't always get to see the back view of them either. So our wonderful SCR department does a great job of capturing moments, and this was just one of those fantastic moments at the coral showcase. Talk a little bit about safe and innovative learning environments. As you know, the state of Texas is doing campus safety audits right now across the state. They're running them through the Texas School Safety Center. We have had two campuses audited already so far, and we'll be bringing you initial results of those audits on October 13th at the board meeting. But just wanted you to know that those are happening across our campuses, and we're grateful that the Texas School Safety Center is working with us to make sure that our staff and our students remain safe. We wanted to give you a quick update on the water situation that we have in Leander and Cedar Park right now. So as you know, the Brushy Creek Water Utility is doing some repairs inside Lake Travis. And so I asked the city of Leander and the city of Cedar Park actually to just give us a couple of slides of brief update that we could share with you. They did start, they're shut down already on Wednesday. They expect about 10 to 14 days to complete the repair. In the city of Leander, the Sandy Creek Water Treatment Plant is now supporting the entire city, which is, has about half the capacity of when they're up and running at full capacity. So their goal is 9 million gallons a day. Operating on Wednesday, they were at 8.9. So the work that they're doing with the community to help, you know, limit water use in the city is working so far. And we just really appreciate our community for stepping up together with us to make sure that we can continue with the necessary water that we have to have and keep all those completely, the pieces that are absolutely not necessary right now on hold until they can finish making this repair. They are in conservation measures in the city of Leander, and so you can visit their website if you want to have more information about that. This repair is happening actually underwater in Lake Travis. And so even though this pipe is leaking, I learned that it's leaking right back into Lake Travis, so we're not actually losing water, which is a good thing. It's just not getting to the Brushy Creek plant. And so they should be back up and running as soon as that repair is done. Lots of water conservation happening in Phase Four. They're tracking their daily usage, you can see if you go to their website. You can also get a message from the mayor there. They have outdoor signs and door hangers and flyers going out to all of the city customers in Leander. And very similar things are happening in the city of Cedar Park. Cedar Park also uses that same regional water plant, and so they've also asked for very, very similar kinds of conservation. And so we just wanted to share some of what they're doing. The district is cooperating fully with the city of Leander and the city of Cedar Park. And Jimmy and his team have been working very closely with both city managers to make sure that we're doing our part as they complete this repair. Right, I wanted to talk a little bit about these two goals, empowered student learning and empowered staff. I really wanted to wrap them both together. And the process that I want to walk you through is our School Improvement Visit Protocol. I've had the privilege of now attending two of these in the last couple of weeks, and I'm going to share my experience of it because I think it's had a huge impact on me. And so as we do these school visits and we work together with really three major teams, the Teaching and Learning Team, working together with the Area Superintendent Team, and then working with the campuses, with this goal of really highlighting how are we going to continuously improve at the campus level and make sure things are happening the best possible way they can for our students and their learning. And so this protocol happens fairly consistently as we do these visits. There's a quick welcome, and then the campus gets to review the work that they're really focused on. And so the principal will share, together with their leadership team, the work that they're focused on, and I'll show you a little bit about what that looks like for the couple that I did this last couple of weeks. We then identify look-for's as we do classroom walkthroughs. So we do this, these walkthroughs as teams across campuses, really looking not for judgments but for evidence of the student learning that's happening. And we are making note of those in these seven-to-eight-minute visits to classrooms and coming back and then having these conversations, which is really selecting which observations we want to put on the continuum that is outlined on the board. And that continuum is from what we really want to see happening, the ideal situation, and then the antithesis of that. So if none of this was happening, what would that look like? And from our observations, where on that continuum would we place these stickies? And then we talk about what wonderings we might have, what questions. And then really, the next step is the critical part. So we then make suggestions on a separate sticky of, of those that are up on the continuum, how could we help them just move slightly towards that ideal? It's not about fixing everything at one time, but really about that continuous improvement. And so very effective protocol that I've watched now at two different campuses. The first one we did was at Laxborough. They explained that they're really focused on the fundamental five, and you can see those up there. In our particular visit and our observations, we were focused on that middle one, the frequent small-group, purposeful talk about the learning. And so as we visited classrooms, we were looking for that frequent small-group, purposeful talk about the learning among the students. And then we came back together again, and Sarah walked us through the continuum, which you can see on the board. I can't see it from here because that's very far away. But explaining how we place those sticky notes on that continuum, and then how we help that leadership team at the campus level nudge to the next level. So the second one that I got to attend was at Blockhouse Creek. They had their literacy and math goals very clearly outlined and their observation sheet ready for us to make those observations. If you know anything about Dr. Katie, you know she runs a really tight ship. And we saw really fantastic things across the campus. These were kindergarten students. We were looking specifically here for the work that was in their stations, and was it very intentionally linked to the literacy goals that they had? And the thing that struck me about these kindergarten students was that every activity that was assigned to them had a fine motor component. So in this right-hand side, you can see them digging in the beans for the letters and then putting them on a metal spatula. But then, once that came off, then they had to write them as well. So, and then they had their phonics sheets out. And in that left picture, you can see those students are drawing and writing about the words that are hanging up on the board in front of them and just doing incredible work. We then went to a second-grade classroom where there was a lot of writing going on, and that was one of their literacy goals as well. I particularly was interested in the Writing Resource book that the students were using. This is something that we use across the district, and it has a lot of resources inside it in terms of wordwork and grammar and other tips to really empower the students to own their own writing and to own the own improvement of the writing. And then what I really loved about this on the right side, you can see that once they were complete with their writing, they were communicating their writing with each other and asking for help to improve their writing. And so there's a lot of student-to-student empowerment happening here, critical review happening here, and learning all kinds of communication skills that were really powerful for our second graders. And then this was our debrief again, going to that continuum. In this case, the continuum was backwards because they already had some things on the board, and so we were trying to get things to move to the left. But really impressive conversations about, now that we've observed what's happening in the classrooms with the students, how do we nudge teachers? How do we nudge the leadership team to do a little better the next time? And so you've heard us talking about the theory of action for change and that work of how do, if students, if we want students to do this, what do we need teachers to do? What do we need the principal to do? All right. And that young lady from Rouse High School was very impressive too, I have to say. And not only empowered students, but also empowered staff. And so incredible week. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, I'm going to move us to 8A1, Community-Based Accountability 2021-2022 Report. Please welcome all the people. Brenda Cruz, Carrie Lynn, Christina, Kimberly Watman, and Kendra Reinance. All the people.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees. So tonight, we want to revisit our Community-Based Accountability Report. You may remember, just a couple of weeks ago, I was here along with another group of colleagues, and we discussed a, which was a combination report, actually, of our state accountability and two focus areas, which was empowered student learning and equitable access within our community-based accountability system. So tonight, our goal is to share the three areas of our community-based accountability, of our strategic plan that is not a part of what our state accountability measures, but absolutely significant to our community. So you may remember, just a quick review is that if you look at the graphic on the left, that this is rooted in our foundation of our mission and our vision and our core beliefs. And we have our graduate profile at the top. That's the attributes we want to empower our students to be, to live, certainly not only just now, but way beyond their experience and time within Leander ISD. So when we look at that strategic plan, we talked a little bit last time about aligning our arrows and that we each have a role in making that strategic plan more than just a document. It really represents the journey that supports our students to own their learning, to pursue their interests and their passions, and really demonstrate all the attributes within the graduate profile. So within that strategic plan, as we've already discussed this evening, there are five focus areas, each with a very specific goal. So our community-based accountability system is actually a framework within that strategic plan. So when we think about the term "community-based accountability", why does all just stop and think on that for just a minute? That is exactly what it states. It's community, it's about what we hold dear and what we have within our hopes and dreams, and what is it we want to look at within our system, and how do we want to hold ourselves accountable to fulfilling those hopes and dreams? So why are we pursuing and engaging this community-based accountability? Because it's always through a lens of continuous improvement. It's not perfection. So I wanted to think of, as we looked at some of the key questions and shared some of the data the last time, when we look at a key question, you'll notice that each key question starts with "to what degree"? Because we're not looking at perfection, but we are looking at the capacity of which we want in the system to achieve that progress. So just keeping that in mind. It is based on the foundation of our documents that we have within our mission and vision. We exist as a system to serve our students, our parents, our staff, and our full community. And most importantly, I think, it allows us, as I shared last time, to share a much deeper, richer, robust story about the efforts and what do we want to hold ourselves accountable to? How will we track that progress and determine that evidence of working toward that capacity within our system? So this last time, we shared the areas of empowered student learning and equitable access within state accountability and community-based accountability. So I hope that some of our viewing audience has certainly accessed the report that was shared this last time. It is on our district website. So tonight, as I stated, we want to look at the three areas indicated by the red stars, empowered staff, impactful family engagement, and safe and innovative learning environments that are not measured or reported in state accountability. But those are, these are all areas that our community has stated that are very important to them. So as the community-based accountability system is a system-wide effort, it is organizational. Who better to share some of these areas regarding staff and family engagement and our safe environment than the colleagues sitting with me this evening, who lead that work each and every day? So the first person I'm going to share it with is Carrie Lynn Egling to discuss empowered staff. is Carrie Lynn Egling to discuss empowered staff.
Thank you. All right. So if we'll go to the next slide. Our focus under empowered staff, of course, is to attract, grow, and retain first-rate employees who are empowered to meet the needs of each and every student. And under that, our first key question, like Brenda said, is to what degree are we attracting, growing, and retaining first-rate employees who are committed to the LISD values, principles, and culture? In the table, you've seen some of this information before. We've talked about it along the way as we've gone through the hiring season out of last year and into this year. You see the 2021 as well as the 2122 reasons for leaving, with the top three being dissatisfied with the profession, leaving education in Central Texas, and then self-family support. We saw a lot of that through COVID, and we continue to see those numbers increase as we're going along. The good news is the very last reason for leaving, change to another ISD in Central Texas, has actually decreased from last year, which is a good sign. People are not leaving because they're dissatisfied with Leander ISD. Mostly, we're seeing that they're leaving because they're dissatisfied with the profession overall. So that's the issue, you know, that we're going to try and address as we go along in growing and retaining employees. In the empowered staff area, we have been very intentional about hiring, attracting, recruiting high-quality, diverse staff as well. And the good news here is we've increased overall applications by 17% for general education, and then special education applications have an increase by 29%. You see some other key indicators there regarding recruitment of male teachers, but we have many more indicators showing an increase in every area of diversity. So growth from last year to this year, increasing our diverse candidate pool as well as our hiring of those candidates in diverse areas. Also, in empowered staff, the second key question is, to what degree do Leander ISD staff feel valued and connected to their campus and department and to the district? This information was taken from the UT Engagement Survey. In the left-hand column, you'll see that those items, with the exception of the first one, are have been consistent in the Engagement Survey. And overall, we see is, you know, 70 to 80% have responded favorably in feeling valued and connected to their campus and the district or department. The bottom four questions, those are new to the UT Engagement Survey. That survey allows us to add specific items to Leander ISD. So these really are a baseline percentage, and so we'll be able to see trends over the next couple of years of how those might change as staff answer those years year over year. To the right, those are also key indicators that have been within the survey, and again, 70 to 80% favorable on how they're connecting to their campus and department and to the district. And I'll turn it over to Family Engagement.
Before we move to questions? So on Slide six here, some of the studies that I've read and some of the discussions I've been in is that workforce teachers like going places where there is diversity in the workforce. They find that culture to be encouraging, and they feel supported as well. And I noticed that you're seeing our workforce diversity increase. What do you attribute that to?
You know, I think that's been our very intentional focus with our recruiters in looking at those universities and ACP programs that have a more diverse staff. I think in addition, the Spirit Exchange Program has brought in teachers from all over the globe and infusing our teaching staff with very diverse backgrounds. And so I think it's principles, it's hiring and looking at those candidates and hiring those candidates. It's our recruiters bringing those applicants into the system. So it's a multifaceted approach for the district to be successful in this area. And I will say, even though on Slide seven, the working with people of diverse backgrounds is 72%, because this is a question that has been on the Engagement Survey for the last several years since we started this survey, this is an increase. You have one data point here, but this is increasing from last year.
I also want to add that we've had to hire a lot more people this year, and Carrie Lynn and her department have done an incredible job of making sure that that happened. But I think you see the increase in the number of overall applications to the district. Part of that is the commitment that this board made to funding our increase in teacher pay by 5%, funding the increase of other staff pay by 4%, and then really bringing that minimum hourly wage up to $15 an hour. And that commitment has enabled us as a district to let these numbers. And I think that plays into diversity too because we're able to capture more of those applicants in that pool.
Absolutely. Huge, huge kudos to the board for supporting those increases and keeping our staff competitive in this market.
All right. Moving to impactful.
I have a question.
Sorry.
I didn't know if we were waiting till the end or not. On page, on Slide five, the self-family support for reasons for leaving, do we have an indication of what that family support looks like? Is it childcare? Is it just being stretched thin? What is, what are our teachers needing the most right now? What does that support look like?
Yes, yes, and yes. It is all of that. It is staying home with babies. It is staying home with elderly parents. It is staying home to care for themselves, you know, just taking a break. We have seen an array of reasons for that self and family care. It's children, it's spouses, it's extended families, it's themselves, it's everything.
Is there anything we're doing for the well-being of our educators? Because I know we, there's a big focus right now with mental health for our students right now, but what about our teachers right now? What are, as a district, what do we have in the works? What do we have planned? What are we doing to ensure that they feel, you know, they want to stay here, they feel supported?
Yes. And we actually just talked about this at our operational leadership meeting on Tuesday. The resources that we've worked, we've put together with Steve Clark and his team for the mental health, we're developing a wellness toolkit. We're also going out for RFP for our EAP, our Employee Assistance Program. Out of the COVID era, what has come about is mental health programs really focused and targeted to K-12. And so there are many different vendors out there so that are focused on K-12 and teachers and campus staff specifically. So we decided to go out, you know, on a non-renewal year to, because we want to get the best EAP programs and resources for our staff. So that RFP is going out on the street, and we hope to have a new EAP program after the first of the year that, like I said, is more targeted and specialized in working with specifically K-12 staff.
And I will add that just from my personal experience with other districts and coming to Leander, the overall benefits package in Leander is incredibly strong and incredibly well-communicated because sometimes in districts, they have things available, but people don't really even know or understand how to use them. But Carrie Lynn's team does an incredible job of putting that all together in one space. We have an app. We have a newsletter that goes out on a regular basis. There's a lot of really powerful communication that helps folks to stay well.
All right. So we will continue on with impactful family engagement. Our goal with impactful family engagement is to engage our diverse community by fostering positive relationships through reciprocal communication and collaboration. And our key question is, to what degree do we foster positive relationships by demonstrating mutual respect for the diverse perspectives of all Leander ISD stakeholders? So what I know about my practice is is that this goal is so key to our strategic plan because we know that research shows that there's a direct correlation between family engagement and student success. And that our student success, it translates not only into higher grades and test scores, it also translates into higher motivation, aspiration, and social competence. So when I look at that as a whole and when I look at our graduate profile and how our goal is empowered student learners, that shows direct alignment with what we are trying to achieve here in Leander ISD. So it makes me very proud that this is a part of our strategic plan and that now a part of our community-based accountability system. So as Brenda had mentioned before, we don't have any state accountability standards for measuring impactful family engagement. So we're going to depend on our employee engagement survey to tell us our benchmarks. This survey results, you are familiar with. These little snapshots of what we were able to take from the Engagement Survey show particularly how incredible our campuses are, how remarkable of a job they do with including our students, making them feel welcomed, giving them that sense of belonging. We have really great scores there. It's even more remarkable that we have our parents at a 70% polling survey say that their teacher's child, sorry, your child's teacher helps everyone feel valued by showing respect for diverse perspectives. And so I think while we are doing really great in this space, the other thing to remind you of is that in our same employment engagement survey, the district didn't do quite as well. So looking, people are making a difference between how our campus is communicating and how our district is communicating. And so what we can do now, now that we have this data, is look at how we can create strategy around that in our district improvement plan and include it in there and really take a really hard look at how we want to either balance each other, support each other, look at the key things that campuses are doing right. How do we support each other in that space of connectivity and in communication? I also want to mention that the data only shares half the story. I feel like we have done an incredible job throughout the spring realizing how much we needed to rebuild trust and connection with our families. We saw that throughout the springs with different spring festivals that were happening. And I feel like we, because we had made such a committed effort to do that, we saw momentum swing throughout the summer. We saw families engaged in popsicles in the park and meeting your teacher night. We saw massive engagement around that, even throughout the first day of school, seeing how robust parent engagement was on our campuses and seeing this real vibrancy around what is happening. So I do believe that that is another part of the story that is here and is with us. We are rebuilding trust when we see it here and even on our Spotlight on Learning, making the observation that parents are here in our audience, bringing their kids to be engaged in this process. Our football stadiums are full. Our Coral Showcase, it was packed to the gills. We don't know how to measure these things data-wise, but we know anecdotally through our experience, we know that these things are having an impact on our school district.
I want to just add a couple of things that this slide brings to me is, one, this first year of community-based accountability for us is a baseline year. And so the data that we're putting in here is not necessarily the perfect data, but it's the data that we have and the data that we're putting forward and the data that we'll then use to see, can we make improvement on in the years to come? And the second thing I'll point out is that community-based accountability is not just about singing our praises and about pointing out the things that we're doing really well. It is also about saying, the community has asked us to care about these things, and we may not be doing quite as well as we want to be doing in these areas. And we're not going to be shy to point that out because that's what a really good accountability system does, is it points out where you're doing okay, but it also points out where you need to make improvement. And that then allows us to make the plans as we go forward to say, here's where we're making the improvements, and we can measure that improvement over time.
Do we know what some of the activities are that the parents would like to be involved in, that they might not be involved in right now?
I don't know. As a system, as from the district level, I cannot answer that question at this time. But please remember that all of our campuses are engaged in looking and choosing three to four of these key questions that they are, they have determined from their data and from their information. So Christina, I think, made a great point is our campuses, when it comes to our family engagement, they are seeing higher favorable responses than we are as a district. So it, I think that's best coming from our campuses. What are they seeing? Is what are those activities that the parents are desiring? What are those activities that they're seeing a great participation rate in and so forth? So all of that is great information as we go through this year to determine what, how does that information help us plan for the upcoming?
Thanks. In this parent climate survey for this question, did we also survey our parents' teacher parents, our community, and also our 18-plus?
It does go out to them as well, but they also do another survey that just looks at just that. So we do have that information.
I would love that information.
Make sure you get it. Okay. So let's continue with impactful family engagement. So as Dr. Gearing pointed out, that it doesn't just show us pats on the back and where we're doing well, but maybe some areas of concern. So our next key question is, to what extent do our students and families feel welcome and have a sense of belonging in our community? And this data is very interesting because you will see where there's some discrepancies between where the parents feel and where the students feel. And I think what's interesting about this one, if you see I or my child feels accepted in school, it's a very high rate, a very high percentage for secondary students. But when you go over to I or my child feels good about themselves, it's down in the 50s. So I think with a lot of this data, what it does is it's, like most data, asks us to ask more questions. And so we've been working on developing the strategies in the DIP to really get to what is this? Because reciprocal communication and communication is key, but there's so much more we can do with partnering with our families. So we're really trying to write in our DIP some of those strategies that are around researching best practices. How do we monitor this? How do we know that we're really partnering with parents? And we got excited because we found some ideas that we didn't have. And so we're really hoping to see this information, this baseline data move, and it's just a starting place to what we can do. So that's where we are with the impactful family engagement. Any questions on that?
Our fifth area is safe and innovative learning environments. And our goal is to provide safe, supportive, inclusive, and innovative environments to inspire each individual learner. And our key question here is, to what degree do our learning environments promote a sense of belonging to ensure each learner feels included, accepted, and safe to be their individual self in our classrooms and our schools? And so as Kendra mentioned, and Dr. Gearing as well, we are being very transparent in our data. We listen to our community, our students and our staff and our parents. And we've definitely identified areas within safety and behavior that we need to improve. Looking at where we have been in society regarding COVID and mental health and recent tragic events in our schools, we know that this is an area that we are working hard on to ensure safety within our classrooms and our campuses. So you can see within the data here, we have parent, elementary, and secondary data, looking at safety in the classroom and safety on the campus as well as discipline being enforced. I'm having to look really closely at that. That discipline is enforced consistently among our campuses. And so you can see that we have definite areas to improve here. I can tell you that this data charges us to look more closely. So we have these numbers here, but what does this mean to our parents? What does this mean to our students? And what does this mean to our staff? Why don't they feel safe? Why do they feel like, you know, behavior is not and discipline is not implemented consistently? And so we have been working with our support services team, our behavior specialists, our LSSPs, our counselors, our APs. We are all working closely to dig into this. There are multiple layers of this data when it comes to safety and also recognizing that within that discipline and addressing that consistently, it's very important to us to address discipline based on individual student need when there are discretionary situations. And so lots to dig in here and lots of areas to improve, but know that the team is collaborating to come up with action plans and get this information from these stakeholders so that we know our next steps. so that we know our next steps so that we can improve in this area of safety. And our next question is to what degree do we design the physical learning environment, including technology and tools to promote student and teacher success? So you can see on our facilities, our overall rating from elementary, secondary, and our parents about our facilities. We are very proud of our learning spaces for our students and Jimmy and his team does a great job in this area. And you can see our elementary students and our parents in the 80s. We do wonder and leaves us to question about the secondary students and what we can do to improve our facilities to better meet our secondary students' needs there in the 64%. We also look at technology and this is a parent question that is answered here. We have 87% of our parents that believe that their child has access to technology and tools to support their learning. And then Jason and his team have done a great job making sure that we have access to technology and Wi-Fi and supporting instruction in our classrooms so that our students can be innovative and our teachers can reinforce those innovative learning environments with technology. And then the last set of data there is also about technology that is from our employee engagement survey. As you can see, most of those percentages are in the 80s and one in the high 70s. So overall, areas for improvement that we can work on, but technology, we are very proud of our data here from our staff. Questions in this area?
Of all those numbers, the secondary students was the one that was in the 60s. What can we say about that?
That is correct. That one is in the 60s and that leaves us to question. So when we get this data, we get a percentage. And so that charges us to check in with campus leaders, check in with instructional coaches, ask some students to uncover and identify why they're rating that low. And so although I don't have that answer, that's something that we're going to have to go to the stakeholders to get their responses so we know what to target and improve there.
Do you all have that information broken down secondary per campus? Because I'd be curious to see what each campus looks like considering they're quite different, considering some have been built recently, some not so recently.
I am sure that is something that, when I'm looking to my friends over here, I am sure that is something that we can get.
I'll look into that for you and see if we can get it. I think we have it by individual campus.
There was a student, I was still trying to look up the term that she used, but when it comes to discipline, where they were talking about discipline being enforced fairly, we heard from a student talk about, gosh, kind of everybody getting in trouble versus that one person. And so that could be something to look into where it's, if this person should get in trouble, then it should be that person and not try and get everybody else in trouble. So that could also be a factor.
Okay, so over the last two meetings, a couple of weeks ago and tonight, we've shared a part of the story, more of a richer, robust story, aligned to each key question. So you can see on the left in this chart, that represents all of our five focus areas and the goals. And the key questions aligned to each one of those is in a horizontal pattern beside it. So what does this color represent on this chart? So a community-based accountability system is, it's for making meaningful decisions. It's not about just a report that we put out or a grade, right? It's for what does it tell us? What other questions does it make us ask? And what is it we need to explore further to reach exactly what we're saying we want? And for that impact we want in our system. So one of the things that, to make those meaningful decisions, we have to start with what's our current spot? What's the current reality and status? What's our initial signal is what we call it. So that's what the colors here represent. So you can see the blue at the very top, you can see the key. The blue is saying it's minimal to no changes. The green is maintaining, so it's maybe it's maintaining an initiative that's already in place, but we're going to make some little edits and tweaks to that. The yellowish-goldish colors, we call that a minor change. That's going to be a change within our system, but it's probably, it may be accomplished within that year and may not need additional resources. And then finally, our orange is that is more of a major change in which it's probably going to extend beyond certainly a year and may need additional resources. So the analogy I always like to think of in my head when I'm thinking about this is, I actually had this happen this week. I get in my car in the morning to drive here. And when I start up my car, what happens? The dashboard lights up, right? And it's giving me all these little signals. So it adjusts itself and it tells me about the temperature. It tells me about the gas in my car, to what level it's at. It's going to tell me about my tire pressure, which mine notified me this week was way too low. So, but those are initial signals because those are helping me before I start my journey to say, hmm, is this something that is something major? I need to stop and not move forward? Or is this something that I can take care of that? I'm fine, I'll get the gas later today, whatever that may be. We have those signals that we operate under each and every day when we're driving down the road, right? We're looking in our mirrors, we're looking at the cars in front of us, their reaction. So it helps us make the most meaningful and best decisions of how we may proceed in a safe path. So when we look at the top of that chart and we're looking at those signals, you can see that a majority of our signals at the district level are what we call in a minor change, followed by three, which are a major change. And that, we looked at that, we look at what our campuses are signaling. So when we look at this, our, there's 10 key questions up there. Our campuses, we ask them to look at three to four key questions that really align to the information and data that they look at each and every year when they look at their needs assessment. So what is the data and information that surfaces? And so they look at that information to determine kind of what is my focus areas I need to work on for this upcoming year? And so these are derived from what is the focus of our campuses? And we did a cross-functional team to determine. Now, there is no exact science. I'm not telling you that's a perfect, exact science to determining, is this a major change, a minor change? And as we go through this process and we've talked about frequently at the last meeting and tonight, that this is a new path for us. We're very excited about sharing this path and about fulfilling our goals toward the hopes and dreams our community stated they desire. So these may change over time. So what we considered as a minor change, we may sit here in November and say, this is looking more a little bit like a major change, right? But it's really looking at what does the information tell us? And there is no better information than coming from, Christina, I think, talked about it in the survey information. These are the numbers, but what does that mean? So it's really having those robust conversations as well to help us determine that path. So when our campuses look at this, and I can assure you as a former campus leader that all five of those goal areas are on the minds of each and every campus leader each and every day because it is vital and significant to their campus community. So when we look at that, their campuses chose three to four of those key questions so for, to identify for their campus improvement plan. So some of these, as they looked over their data, some of that surfaces as more of a need than another. So you'll notice that every one of those is represented with the exception of the family engagement. And going back to what Christina said, what did we see? We saw that our campuses do a very nice job. And thank you to our campuses for communicating and connecting with our families. So that did not surface as a high priority need, not something they certainly will ignore. They absolutely have done a beautiful job of that. But that is something that did not surface as a need among the campuses, but it did for us as a district, at the system, at the district system level. So what you see here are those key identified areas that you're going to see as we look at our campus improvement plans that's coming up within October. So as again, I hope that some of our viewers have had the opportunity to view the community-based accountability report that is on our website. It's also a link here. So in summary, again, why are we engaging in this? Simply, it's about a school community. It's about our students, our parents, our staff, the entire community. And no one item out of any of those defines a community. It's all of those put together. So I feel like if you took just one of those out and said, that's almost like saying I'm reading a chapter of a book and now I'm going to summarize this whole book. We can't do that. It's each one of those and how do they connect and play with each other to help our system and most importantly, our students be the very best? Thank you.
Let's just add one quick comment if I may, actually two. So this, you'll notice that the strategic plan is a big plan. It has audacious goals in it and it's a five-year plan. It's spread over a long period of time. What you've seen them present tonight is really the focus we have in year one implementation. What I love about it is that we've preceded it with this community-based accountability report. So instead of waiting till the end of year one to produce an accountability, we've preceded it with this accountability report that really lays this baseline set of data so that as we get into implementation, as we start to execute out on year one of the strategic plan, we'll be able to track that data and the improvement as we go across. And then the second thing that you'll start to notice is that as we get better at this system, our campus improvement plans will start driving the district improvement plan and start really driving us towards the strategic plan goals. And so that's the right order of process that's been very difficult for us up until now to get to. And this gives us a path towards making that happen in a much more effective way. So thank you for the incredible work that you've done. I know this has been a huge lift for a lot of people. It really pleases me to see so many different people involved in the work and really engaged in the work and owning the work. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We need a break or we want to go? Okay, five minutes, 10 minutes? 10-minute break.
With our policy EF local, then it does not move forward. If it does move past that first criteria, if it does meet policy EF local, other things to be considered include organization and ease of use, students that are learning, and so on and so forth. So this was just our initial presentation to let you know that we're getting the work started, and we wonder if there are any questions from you.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Have a great night.
We'll be back.
I'm trying to find my place. Hold on. All right, we are going to move to 8C2. Discuss Leander ISD educational specification. Jimmy, thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to talk about the educational specifications. It's from the newly adopted Texas Education Agency, the facility standards. They recently adopted new standards as of they become effective November 1st of 2021. And so one of the things they do is require us to actually have the board approve these five items. The educational specifications, method of compliance for instructional facility space, and then level flexibility. And then the last two items, of course, the budget at 100% design development and long-range facility master plan. We'll go into each of those items very briefly in a minute. The, um, one of the things this does talk about is if you have a certain project before November, you can use the old standards, but of course, these, all of our projects are going to be in compliance with this now, from now on. And then, and so basically what the board has to approve is the educational specifications. And as I mentioned down through there, the specifications really are the program of space that you're looking at. And so it's just the square footage of all the different spaces laying out what space gets what square feet. And so, and then of course, the method of compliance, that really is, takes into consideration all the instructional space that is going to be utilized by the campus to be able to calculate the maximum number of students in that building. And of course, the level of flexibility really goes into the different types of furniture arrangement in the classroom design, how you utilize spaces outside, as well as, you know, in our case, the neighborhoods is a good example. Of course, design development will be bringing a budget. Typically, we just bring you the GMPs, but you'll get a design budget, so. And then, of course, the long-range facility master plan, not to get that confused with our long-range facility plan. The, this one is really site-specific, what we're going to be talking about. And it just lays out the facility where the portables go, our queuing lanes, and parking. And if you're going to plan for any expansions, where is it going to go? It's just, you know, laying out the, that site plan, so. And it goes into more details, but I didn't want to go page by page because there's a lot of background information I provided just to help everybody since it is new. But I did highlight most of it, like I said, program of spaces. I'm not going to go through each slide since I went over all of this pretty much already. Then, of course, the, um, our educational specs also, if you've, it is one of the attachments. It actually includes our district, you know, mission, vision, and goals, and our GOJI for the project. And so it, that's all part of that educational specifications that we do use. Method of compliance, of course, I went over what it's for, but there are two different methods. It's qualitative and quantitative. The quantitative is what we typically will use. It's, you know, where your cafeteria and library are not considered instructional spaces. And so, you know, qualitative, if you're building a facility for New Hope High School, you might use your cafeteria, if you have a cafeteria, as instructional space. So you could include that space to add to what all space you are using. But typically, we're going to use quantitative. The flexibility level, again, I did include pictures just to try to give you frame of reference, what we were talking about. Flexibility, one is what I call sit and get, or everybody does. The old-style classroom where it, teacher stands up front and does just that, and does the instruction. Flex, level two, you're looking at where you have some flexible furniture and, you know, really no access to the outside, either our neighborhoods or outdoors. And so it's, you know, potentially, you could argue that could be us. But I think level three really does fit our district a lot better with our new facilities that we are building now. It has more flexible. You have the neighborhoods. You, you just have a lot more access and a lot more flexibility and smart boards going up now. Flex level four, that's, you know, they can just do everything anywhere. And the big difference is you see on the slides, you know, like if you look at level three, it's 42 square foot per child, per pupil that you have to base your calculations on. If you use flex level two, it's at 36 square feet. So it's, you could actually, in theory, add more, have more kids in the building if you used every space, you know. But I think, like I said, our district really is flex level three. And so what we're recommending is, you can see our square feet, 48, just over 48,000 square feet of instructional space in our elementary. And using 42 square feet, according to this, we, if we used every space, we'd have 1,144 kids in the building. Of course, that doesn't take into consideration how you use your spaces. That's just if you used every space at the same time. And so, you know, that's when you, when you start looking at functional capacity. And so, but this just is frame of reference for TA. One thing the facility standards did do, it used to be more driven by classroom size specification. 700 square feet for a minimum classroom for an elementary. Now they just look at the total square footage of the building. They don't go in and specify classroom sizes. It's based on this calculation now. And so, and of course, we'll be doing the, as I mentioned, it's just really going through what we already do. And so, you know, typically, you'll look at, you know, what is TA trying to add to our plate? But this, luckily, this district has been doing all of this except for one item, which we'll talk about. The safety and security pieces of this, you know, goes through. And it talks about the multi-hazard plan, which our district has, a great one. And so we're in compliance there. And then, of course, one of the things it looks at is when you get into your projects, either new school or major renovations, if you, between $1 and $5 million, you have to do one additional standard. If you, between 5 and 10, it's two additional standards. And if it's over $10 million, it has to be all three standards, which these are our standards. All exterior doors must be numbered. We're doing that. All primary entrances must have, you know, an obstructed line of sight approaching visitors checked. We, physical barrier to prevent them to access the facility, we have that. And of course, where they check in and check out, so we do that standard. And of course, the last one is really the only gotcha from TA. All primary and secondary entrances must have a security camera, you know, moving forward with these projects. And so that's, we already have the primary entrance with a camera, but we'll have to add cameras at the extra, uh, secondary entrances. So that's the bulk of it. So really, it's more of a formality for these facility standards.
Yeah, so for clarification purposes, TA has modified their facility standards, which has triggered this discussion. They've also modified what the board has to approve.
Yes.
Which is a little different, but it hasn't really, for us, modified what we actually do, right? So we've been doing all of these things up until now, except for the secondary security camera at the entrance. But everything else we've been doing, it's just a matter of bringing it to the board for approval now.
Exactly.
In a different, different method, right?
Exactly. And as we do this, we won't have to bring everything, every project. Once you approve a educational specification with the method of compliance, if you don't change it substantially for the next project, you can use the same, you know, approval process that you're doing tonight. But in our case, we will be modifying our design to go to 1,000 student at core and enrollment. That's going to make a change, so our next school will be bringing back the same thing, but it'll just be because of the change in the scope. But after that, you can use it up for five years, according to TA, without bringing it back for approval.
So the next step for this particular, because this is for Elementary 30 specifically, and you'll bring this back to the board for approval at the next meeting, correct?
Correct. Any questions?
I just have a request from the committee. When you're working on the question about policy, can you look and see if you can moralize any of this language into the adopted policy?
Something about adopted policy, Trish.
Can you say it one more time, Trish? Sorry, it was hard for us to hear.
Yeah, when our policy committee works on new policy language, right, we want to look at the policy revamp. I'd like them to look at the policy language that's related to facilities to see if there's anything we need to moralize in that policy. We might not, but I'd like them to do this.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move to 8C3. Consider approval of a resolution nominating an individual to the Travis Central Appraisal District, TCAD Board of Directors. Do you have a motion?
Good evening. Can you all hear me? Good evening. Yes, I am back again this evening, bringing back the resolution to nominate an individual to the Travis Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. And we do know that, I think we provided a name to y'all, that Tom Buckle has been the person serving in that position for quite some time. And he is eligible, we found out, to serve again and is willing to serve. We aren't aware of any other potential candidates, so the administration is recommending Mr. Buckle. But if there's, it's the pleasure of the board.
I move that the board approve the resolution to nominate Tom Buckle to the Travis Central Appraisal District Board.
My second.
All those in favor? That's seven ayes, no nays. Motion passes.
Okay, moving along. We're moving along to the, bringing back again just another look at the 21, 22 budget projections. We wanted to bring that back one last time. We are getting final to close. Obviously, we haven't closed completely, but we have realized some additional savings. And so we are closer to, we have a pretty minimal deficit. We suspect it's closer to the $3 million. I think last time we brought it, it was about seven, so it's just really information for you. No questions about that? And the next item is the consider approval of budget amendments. This is taken off of consent, again, because we did increase the budget deficit because of rolled POs. So whenever we were increasing any kind of budget, we want to bring that out so that if you have any questions about that, we can answer those for you. The majority are items that just did not come in. MLISD is a big piece of it. And then, of course, furniture and some other items that are just delayed delivery. And so we needed to roll those funds to this year in order to pay for those items.
Any questions? I move that the Board of Trustees approve the budget transfers and amendments to the 2022, 2023 budget as presented.
My second.
All those in favor? Seven ayes, no nays. Passes.
Loving y'all. Okay. The rest are our monthly reports. You get these every month, and so they're pretty standard reports, but we're here to answer questions if you have any.
Do I have any questions?
Oh, awesome. Then it's, I know. Thank you.
It is 9:04 PM. It is time to go, the board will now go into closed sessions for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551-071, Texas Government Code 551-074, Texas Government Code 551.0821, and Texas Government Code 551.074. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the board returns to open session.
Trish and Gloria will be connecting via my Zoom room, and so I'll connect you in there. Are they frozen?
Are they frozen? They're gone.